special meeting agenda Tuesday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty eight P M. Meeting the go meeting. The public hearing, first is a coastal site plan review, number three, three, seven, A flood and information application, number three, eight, eight, A. Hill Haven LLC, H Shenamere Road, proposal to construct and install a new dock, existing on the fixed pier, ramp and plant platform, and to form related site development activities within the regulated area. The one point nine acre property located on the south end of Shenamere Road, approximately eight hundred feet south is intersection with Continent Island Road, and is shown on the subsurface map, number sixty-eight, at lot eight, in the R one zone.
Mr. Chairman, Matt Rakowski is here on behalf of Race Engineering. I want to note for the record that he does have an approval from the state of Connecticut, D E E P. And D E P was referred this application, and they sent in comments dated February twenty-fourth from Crystal Callenberg. Thank you for the opportunity to review and comment on the proposed proposal. The concrete pad will provide a level transition to a new aluminum gangway and floating dock. We have reviewed the application for consistency with the applicable policies of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act, and have not found any inconsistencies with the proposal. Obviously, a license from the state of Connecticut will be required prior to the construction of the dock. Mr. Rakowski also notes that he has received approval from the Army Corps of Engineers. Mr. Rakowski, you can take it from here.
Say that again, Jeremy? Am I?
Yep, you're good.
Want me to precise this?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, can I have control of the, can I share my screen?
Yes, I'm gonna give that to you now, Matt. Okay, so you should have control.
Perfect. Everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Yes. Shenamere Road, okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, this is Matt Rakowski with Race Coastal Engineering. I'm a project manager with Race. Uh, first off, I'd like to say thank you to the commission for hearing us tonight, and hope everyone's staying safe and healthy during this difficult time. So, here to talk about eighteen Shenamere Road, it's a residential project. Here, sort of building red, is the subject property on the south end of Shenamere Road, in between Scotts Cove and the five mile river. Site's exposed out to the south, southeast, to Long Island Sound. The entire shoreline of the property is rock outcrop, steep rock outcrop into waters, as you can see on the left-hand side of the existing site plan, rock outcrop coming down, and then extending out to pretty deep waters, five to minus ten. The applicant is seeking to install a concrete pad on the bedrock to warp out to a floating dock for recreational purposes. The proposed project is a five foot wide by roughly four and a half foot long concrete pad. It's a bedrock to provide access to the aluminum, three and a half foot wide by forty-five foot long aluminum gangway, down to an eight by twenty floating dock. That floating dock is going to be anchored in place with steel piles, pipe piles drilled into bedrock out here in the water. As was discussed, we, the applicant has received D E P authorization, E P license two thousand nineteen zero six three oh four, structure dredge and fill permit, to complete the activities in, added to D E P's jurisdiction. We've also received the Army Corps of Engineers, New England District, authorization under a general permit, and A E two thousand nineteen zero zero five two one, for the proposed work, again, extending water work of the high tide line into the Corps' jurisdiction. Project falls within a flood zone, as everyone's, I believe, aware in this, look through the application. It's on a rocky shorefront. No impact is anticipated to those, to those areas. The concrete pads, very minimal, there's no effect on the B F V due to this pad, and it's a minor warfing out just to connect the aluminum gangway such that the applicant can have access to, or the property owner can have access down to the floating, the proposed floating dock. Project's pretty straightforward. That's all I have on, on the application tonight. Want to thank you for your time, and let me know if you have any questions.
Jeremy, can you point out exactly how much jurisdiction, I'm, I'm gonna guess this is what Steve would want you to do, point out how much jurisdiction we have in the dock?
Sure, Matt, if you could go back to the third, uh, third slide, which shows the amount of work above elevation zero, can you back it up two, two slides, Matt?
Hi, yeah, so can you see my, the proposed, the partial proposed plan? So, the town is landward of Seajail. So, what's the, what's in the?
Can you just go to this right, can you just move your slides down so we can actually see what you're referencing to? Oh, still the thing, stay safe.
Oh, sorry, uh, just the same thing, or?
Yeah, just the other slide, we can't see the other slide. I know you probably can see it, but we can't see it, the public won't be able to see the recording of it.
Actually, channel seventy-nine has, has the correct slide up on the screen right now.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, my screen, my screen's showing the proposed, it should be, and it should be showing the proposed plan, what the applicant's.
Matt, this is Jeremy Ginsburg. Would you say that the amount of work in the town's area, which regulates, is less than twenty-five square feet? Maybe thirty?
Uh, yeah, correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, what would be in the town's jurisdiction is the concrete landing, which the gangway would be fastening to. That is five, five foot by four and a half feet, so it's twenty-two point five square feet.
Great. I, I don't have any problem with this. Steve, can, uh, you wanna just text me to say, or give me a nod on text to know that you don't have any problem with this, and then, Mr. Riley, would you like to start, and we'll go around the circle?
Just a quick question, is that the photo to the right of what I'm looking, of the circle, looks like some outcropping of something or other, but is there another dock anywhere near there?
There is, there is not.
Okay. This won't interfere with any other dock, that's?
Okay, it will not interfere with any other repairing rights, uh, to the, to the east or west.
Good. Thank you.
Mr. Warble?
Along with my own copy of it. I don't have any questions, Jeremy, that's fine.
Jennifer, can you hear me now?
Jennifer, can you hear me now?
Oh, there you are.
When yours is on, mine is down. Beauty.
Nope.
Ken?
No questions, sorry.
I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, since we're going in and out, we're, so it sounds like we're all in the same, do you hear you there?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here, I agree.
And then if there's any members of the public.
Steve, I hear you talking, do you want me to continue?
It's good.
Yes, if you could continue, I, I think the sense I get is all the commission members, there are no further questions from the commission members, so now Jennifer, it would just be if there's any members of the public.
Does any member of the public have anything they want to add, or any questions? I'm looking at my chat on the screen to see if any members of the public have raised their hand to talk, seeing none. So, I'll move, motion this for you guys to create a, um, positive.
No, no, um, if, if, Jen, Jen, it's me. So, if, if, if there are no other questions, I would, it's a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
George Riley.
Looking for, all's in favor, say eyeball.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Great.
Closed. There we go.
Thank, thank you.
Who seconded, who, who seconded that motion?
I think it was Jennifer.
Jennifer? Jennifer.
Yeah, after you say, say your name. Okay, Jen, why don't you read the second one?
Okay, special permit application, number fifty-eight, Darian Historical Society, forty-five, Old Kings Highway North, proposal to establish a five-week summer camp program for up to thirty campers plus staff. The point three six acre subject property is located on the east side of Old Kings Highway North, approximately sixty feet south of its intersection with Brookside Road. It is shown on the accessories, accessories map, number thirty-five, is lot number forty-three in the D B zone, in D B R, or D B zone.
Okay, Jeremy, can you tell us what this is about?
This is about a proposal, the historical society is a special permit use in the zone it's in, and this would be a modification of their existing special permit use to allow for a summer camp there. Maggie McIntyre, Jane Masa, and Bob Pascal are here to describe the proposal. Maggie's with the historical society, and Jane Masa's with Pink Rhubarb, who would be running the operation. All right, just for the record, uh, before Maggie presents, I would note for the record that this has been referred to the local traffic authority, which is the police department, who had no comment, as well as the fire marshal, who had no comment. Take it away, Maggie.
Thank you. Um, actually, I think our board president is on, Bob Pascal, and he was gonna present tonight, Father, are you there?
Yeah, I, we do have a few slides, if you guys wanna give me presentation, if not, I can just talk through those, if it's easier.
Sure, Bob, let me hand that over to you now.
Perfect, right there.
Okay, could have it.
Uh, okay, let me know, uh, I think I'm sharing, are you guys able to see my, my screen? We can, we can see it. Yep. Great. I have my PowerPoint. Look at my screen, it's completely black, yes, hold on. Uh, okay, you still seeing it?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, hold on, my machine is not loving it.
Sorry, I, I'm not, do it. There, if you just.
I think I've got it, you've got this thing.
Yeah, again, channel seventy-nine has it, so that's good. There we go.
There we go, I'm, I'm sorry, you guys can see it? Okay, great. So, we have just four quick slides to kind of frame our request for the special permit. Again, I'm Bob Pascal, I'm the president of the Darian Historical Society, and I'm joined by Maggie McIntyre, the society's executive director, and Jane Masa, who's principal of Pink Rhubarb. And this is a special permit around the society hosting a children's program this summer. A little background, we have been based here since nineteen fifty-three, and our mission is really to collect, preserve, and exhibit local market effects, but also to educate and celebrate the special story of Darien. To that end, we've been very active in recent years. I draw your attention to our activity over the past year, and really, the, the bottom two bullets there are the most notable. Each year, we welcome all of the town's third grader.
Turn mine out, and turn yours off.
Okay. It's off.
Uh, we're boarding seven hundred students, and we welcome more than three thousand people per year. And what we're proposing to do is to allow Pink Rhubarb, which is a great organization, owned and led by Darien resident Jane Masa, who operates a highly successful program that provides healthy and creative learning for seven to eleven-year-olds, fully insured and licensed through the state of Connecticut. And this program was hosted last summer at the congregational church. It should, we're estimating to be twenty-five to thirty children per day, plus or minus over this five-week period. Again, children, seven to eleven, running really from the back half of June through the first half of July. This is a period when the museum would be normally closed, so this will really be all of the historical society's activity in this period, and it has a very high student-teacher ratio. And at this point, again, thank you for considering this request, and we'll open it up for any questions.
Any questions from the members, let's go with Kara Gately first.
Um, I have no questions. I think with the traffic authority, I mean, with the police, and the fire, and the neighbors, and the limited, you know, there wouldn't be initial traffic, and a limited, you know, sort of like controlled number of students and attendees, I have no issue with this. And I have no questions.
Jennifer? Any questions?
Um, as long as the local, nope, traffic authority, fire marshal's good, I'm good. I'm a big fan of Pink Rhubarb.
George Riley?
Well, I mean, here the local traffic authority doesn't have any concerns, but I would expect they're dealing with Old Kings Highway North. I'm just thinking about, as far as I know, the parking arrangement for the historical society is just the, the rectangular area, as you drive in the driveway, you can park on either side of that rectangle. So, I'm wondering what will be the flow as these twenty-five to thirty kids arrive and the morning get picked up in the evening?
I can answer that. So, the parking lot, I would say, could accommodate like thirty cars or so, and on any given day, on any given week, we have about that amount coming to the historical society for either ladies' luncheons, or coffees, or lecture programs, and it's never really a problem. People go to the end, and then turn around, and then come back out, and in this case, especially with the summer camp sessions, it wouldn't be everyone all at once, because it would be a staggered drop-off kind of situation, but usually, throughout the week, we have about that many all at once, on any given day.
So, are you expecting parents to walk into the building with their kids, or, or are we gonna let them get out of the car and go, or how does that work?
Um, I think, well, with, I should let Jane answer, answer this question, but we do have two different entrances, and I know with the student-teacher ratio, the, the doors would probably be open, and the kids would be welcomed in. Is that right, Jane?
Yeah, typically, the counselors escort the kids to the parents' cars, that's typically how it works, just for safety and control of the kids. That's worked very successful last year.
That's, that would be drop-off?
And pick, well, drop-off, no, more, it's the pickup on the other end, when they're leaving, so they would drop off the kids, just come, the counselor checks them in, and then to leave, the kids are escorted with the counselor.
Okay, so drop-off in the morning, will the counselor be there to pick them up at the car, or? How does that work? Yeah?
Yeah, so the counselor has a sign, and she may check the kid in, and then the child comes with the counselor.
Okay.
It's pretty organized and very controlled.
How many staggered?
Not at one time.
Yeah, how many, how many sessions of drop-off and pickup on their day, I don't know, how staggered is it? Five cars per time, time, or?
Yeah, they don't, they, they usually, they start at around nine fifteen, and then by the end, it's like quarter of ten typically, so we usually have like five cars at a time. Not all the kids or parents come at one time.
But that's not a sign, you just let them come in kind of free-form?
Yeah, I mean, there's a start time for the camps, but it's not like, you know, a movie showing where everyone's there at one time, it depends on their schedule, they have their drop-offs in the morning, that they have to count for, and they have other kids, and so it's not always all at one time.
Okay, and so as you drive in the driveway, I believe you can park perpendicularly on the right as well as the left, so if somebody parks on the right to let a child out, that child might be walking across the parking lot, which strikes me as a little, little dangerous, is that allowed, Carrie, or?
And just to clarify, George, there, as you're driving in, there is only parking on the left, so let's call that the inbound parking only.
Good, okay, I, I didn't get that, okay. So, there won't be transitting through or across that parking?
Shouldn't be.
All right, that's okay, Benny.
You're good. Okay, next up, Larry Warble, any questions?
Uh, no questions, nice presentation, thank you.
Jim Rand?
I have no questions.
Okay, that's all five commissioners. My only question is, did you, did you or have this historical society, um, ever spoken to using overflow parking for Good Life Shopping Center? Is there any kind of reach in there? Because I did see that, that Mid-Biddle, who owned Good Lives, put a good letter of recommendation for you.
Um, can I, it's Maggie McIntyre, can I speak to that? We have a really good working relationship with the neighbors on either side of us, and a lot of people, there's a corner, like a, a cycle exercise place, and a dance place, and a hairdressers, and a lot of times, people will park near where we are and walk over, and when we have a really big event, like our, our vampire lecture, that drew like eighty people, um, in the evening, yeah, people park over there, and it's never been a problem. We have a really good working relationship with Good Lives.
Perfect, great, trust that's gonna last through the summer. That's all the commissioners, and all the other questions we have, are there any, anyone from the public would like to speak to this application?
They can either raise their hand, and Fred will unmute them.
Uh, you can raise your hand, you can press the chat button, you can make a smiley face, and wave. Uh, hearing none, invitation, motion to close.
Hello?
Uh, Jim Rand moved, and I bet you Kara Gately seconded. I thought so. All's in favor? Say, oh, there you go.
Aye.
Hearing's closed. Thank you, we will deliberate this, probably, hopefully, today, right?
Deliberate and possibly decide it next week, if things go well.
We'll get deliberate tonight, and probably get a decision, a writ decision next week. That's the goal.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks, guys. It's Kate.
Bye.
Okay, next, we'll move it to the general meeting, you want to read it for us, Jennifer?
Sure, moving to the general meeting. Amendment of business site plan, number three oh two, special permit, Baywater Corbin Park, and Post Road, Corbin Drive, request to amend previously approved plans.
Okay. Uh, great, Jeremy, you wanna tell us what's going on? Can everybody see Jeremy and hear Jeremy?
Uh, yeah, this is a request by David Genvys, who, as you know, is the developer for the Corbin project. He and I spoke earlier in the week with his coworker Kate Perez about some changes to the plans for the Corbin district, so he's gonna walk us through those requested changes, which will require a minor amendment to the previously approved plans. So, he's gonna spend a few minutes with a PowerPoint to walk you through it, and then the end of the PowerPoint summarizes the changes he's looking for. So, I'll let David and Kate take it from here.
One quick question, I did not get a copy of the PowerPoint on my email, did any of the other commissioners get the PowerPoint?
I'm looking for that right now, actually.
If you can look it, I'm gonna share, Steve.
Up on the screen right now.
Yeah.
It's on the left screen?
Uh, can you see it on the screen somewhere?
Yes.
All right, David, take it away, please.
Great, let me just try to get this clutter off my screen, okay, great. So, thank you for taking the time to be with us under these circumstances, and for expending the effort to figure out this go-to meeting. We have basically been working with our team of architects, engineers, and construction people to kind of refine all the details of the project, with the goal of moving the culvert pipe that we have to move, that runs behind the buildings along Corbin Drive and behind ten twenty Post Road, beginning in July and August of this year, and then our big picture goal is to start the buildings that we're calling phase one, or really now phase two, if the culver work is phase one, to start the buildings that begin at the gas station next to ten twenty, Dover Park, and then run behind through where the Mathlasmium and Karate Studio is, and the Tibbetts Law. So, we've been finalizing all of the design details for what, what I'll call phase one, or phase two, and as you may know, I think we made the point several times in the conversation, in the presentation, we don't actually own all of the buildings along Corbin Drive, so the gas station property, which would become Bank of America's new branch, that's going to continue to be owned by the owner of the gas station, Vince and Kathy Durantis. We're literally just the developer, kind of for hire, having put it together, and then are working with them to move the gas station so that we can carry out this project, and then take down the building in which Bank of America currently sits at eleven twenty Post Road. So, in going through this with Vinny and his family, and, and the architects and the engineers, we have a couple of refinements that we want to go through, it's either, I think, three minor, and then we want to show you, or give you a preview of something here that relates to the garage that would be part of the second phase of the project in the, in the triangular property on the other side of Corbin Drive. So, let me see, here, how do I, okay, can you see that new page?
Perfect.
Yes, we can, David.
Okay, great, so the area that's marked in colorblind, I think it's blue, it could be purple, that's kind of meant to highlight what we're calling phase one, which is the culvert pipe that would get moved first, and the, you know, drainage system that will be installed opposite thirty-six Old Kings Highway South in that right side of the, of the screen. So, we moved the culvert, we built it through buildings. The changes that we're gonna show you, really relate to phase two, which are the buildings that we labeled I, H, and K. We are allowed in buildings I, H, and K to go to fifty feet. What we originally proposed was a building for building H, which is the middle building of forty-one point, sorry, forty-six point five feet, building I of forty-one point nine feet, and building K of forty-four point five feet. I'm gonna take you through each building, and you'll see these are pretty minor. Building I is the, is the building that would go where the gas station is, that's the proposed Bank of America branch, with the drive-through on the right, and then the bank branch along the Post Road. The entitled height was forty-one point nine feet, the resolution allowed us to go to fifty feet. We've made some tweaks to the design with, with Vinny and his family, you know, getting into the mitty-gritty in the details, and that building's gone up by, actually, that's really like six, like point six inches, or, point six feet, rather, or eight inches. So, we're asking for an eight-inch increase in the size of, of that building, which I hope you would agree is relatively immaterial, but what they're so allowing us to do, is it allowed us to get a, a full floor, a full-height floor across the bulk of the Post Road side of the building, unlike ten twenty Post Road, which, if you, if you think about ten twenty Post Road, it's got a full two stories, and then the third floor has dormer windows, and I think that some of you have been in those apartments, they're kind of dark, the windows aren't very large, and the light isn't great, the ceiling heights are kind of low, and they're at eight feet, and that was a big part of the discussion when we looked at a text amendment in the beginning with the zoning commission, so Vinny wanted to add, or adjust this to make it more of a full third story in this area. We held it back on the side of ten twenty, and we held it down on the Corbin Drive corner of the property to kind of minimize the impact, and again, the average height to the And again, the average height to the midpoint is just an, it's an eight inch change in the, in the, in the building versus what was originally proposed. Uh do you want me to take you through each of the three buildings and then we can, we can ask questions?
That's a good idea, David. So right now we're talking about building I, which is page five of the PowerPoint. Okay.
Page five and that's an eight inch, eight inch change. Building H, um this is the building that basically runs down Corbin Drive, behind the gas station on the site of where Mathnasium and the Karate Studio is today and then part of the Tibbetts Land. And this one with the refinements that we've made ends up being about nine inches shorter or taller rather. Still well below the maximum height allowed under the resolution. But it's a nine inch difference and we wanted to bring that to your attention and make sure that would be okay. And then lastly, um the building K, which sits where the Tibbetts Law office is, this building is actually coming down by two point seven feet. And so it's going from the title height of forty four and a half feet to forty one point eight feet. So this one is being reduced you know, by more than I guess, you know, the, the, the other two are being increased, but we were trying to kind of work through this and it got a little tricky if we got into the details and started working on all the geotechnical work because if, if you know Corbin Drive, if you think about Corbin Drive as you go down, this site slopes down relatively steeply as you go from like the middle of Corbin Drive down to Old Kings Highway South and so there's been a lot of to-ing and fro-ing with our design team and the landscape architects to try to make sure that this looks good and we may actually change this one detail this, we don't, Kate Perez is also here with me. She's joined us as of December to help execute the project. She's also a Darien resident. But this, this door leads to the garage on, on one side and there's another garage here. There may be another door here for symmetry, but but the height was really what we were here to talk to you about. So these are the three, three buildings that we're calling phase two. Those are the changes that we, we would request. Lastly, um and this is a more of a, more of an informational thing and just a, an issue we wanna bring up to you and then we can talk about it at a later time. We don't have to get into it now, but this shows the underground parking. H is the underground parking under the phase two buildings. And G is the underground parking under the phase three, phase four buildings. E is the structured parking garage. This parking area G was originally designed by our architect Bruce Beinfield. You know, when we first got going and it was meant to be kind of as efficient as possible and it was a best guess, it kind of the best way to approach this. But as you can see, it's kind of a donut. And we've had more time to kind of work on this with Bruce and with the construction companies and to figure out what's the real optimal way with more detail. We've done a lot of drilling and geotechnical work. Really identified where the rock is, where the water is and the depth of groundwater in this area. And the conclusion that we came to is we can do this, but we came up with an idea that we think is a better idea. This garage creates, this garage, just G, creates two hundred and forty parking spaces. John Block from Tyre Bond and one of the construction people that we were working with came up, came up with an alternative approach, which is this garage, which is more, you know, more rectangular and, and connects the underground parking into the structured parking. This is a lot more efficient to build. It's, it has much less wasted space and there's a lot less shoring involved, which is what you have to do to kind of protect the ground from caving into the hole as you excavate. You, you basically install what we call sheet piling, which is just big sheets of metal that hold the, hold the ground up and, and prevent it from kind of falling into the hole as we're excavating. And this design, as shown, would actually create two hundred and eighty-seven spaces, so forty-seven more spaces than than what we proposed in the donut version, which was part of the entitlement. We're not sure, as big caveat, we're not sure we won't lose some of those spaces, some of the forty-seven incremental spaces when we get into the details which we're working on now, you know, mechanical rooms and garbage enclosures and so on and so forth. So we think, we think we could end up with less than an additional forty-seven, but Bruce Beinfield and the design team and Kate, who are the real pros, don't think we'll end up with less than twenty. So the punchline here is this is an informational point I wanted to kind of raise with you. The point of ingress don't change and egress don't change, we would be creating a minimum of twenty more parking spaces, up to forty-seven more parking spaces and, and we're not really asking for any more space anymore, you know, building space. We may have some slight adjustments around some of the small retail spaces, but we don't expect to be asking for anything material in terms of, you know, or changes in retail square footage. There's no change in the apartment count and there's no change in the office square footage. So that's more of an informational thing for now. We'll come back once we get more detail, but I, we wanted to run it by you just to make sure that, you know, you didn't see any potential problems. Again, we're not asking for any approval or anything. This is kind of a conceptual discussion.
Okay.
And those are all, that's really it.
Okay, so let's flip to page ten. So tonight we're gonna talk about really just three changes, which is increase in height in building I, which is gonna go up eight inches. The increase in height of building H, which is gonna go up nine inches. And then, and then the decrease in building K, which is gonna go down. Alright. And that's, so those are the three changes you, you're looking for approval tonight, Mr. Genvys?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's grab all three at one time. We'll just go around the horn with the five commissioners on the phone. But before we do that, let me ask Jeremy if he has anything to add or subtract.
No, I've, I've gone through this with David. The, the changes make sense. They're all, no change in height is greater than a foot. So it really wouldn't be noticeable over that, which the commission's already approved and it still complies with the regulations. And as he noted, there's no additional square footage.
Correct, okay. This time is Sarah and Larry Warble, any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
Okay, um next Jim Rand?
Nothing for me, Mr. Jeremy.
Thank you, sir. Um Jennifer Leahy?
Nothing for me. I'm proud of that. I also just wanna put my two cents. I think the parking garage, I know we're not talking about that, but just it looks safer to me with the parking garage instead of having them all broken up as a woman in a parking garage. I'd, I'd like that plan. It means we've been much more than before it was all this connected.
Very, very good talk. You can see from one side to the other side.
Agree, Jennifer. That's a big, that's a big bonus of this that we hadn't honestly considered before, but it's, it's gonna be light and bright and much more open.
Okay, uh next Karen Gately.
Uh no questions. I think like Jennifer, I vote for the structural safety of like not being a donut and um I didn't, I didn't even consider that, but like the safety of the big open parking area, not like corners and sort of disjointed parking. I think that seems like a improvement to me. And I think, you know, in terms of, you know, difficulties sort of we're seeing in some developments. Not, not a lot of them, but in terms of like if there's more light for the apartments that you're thinking about on the upper levels, having it be, you know, not dormer, but a little bit more height to increase, you know, ceiling height and additional light, which I think makes things a little more enjoyable or increases on quality of life if you're living in them. I think that's completely a wise improvement.
Thank you. George Riley, last but not least.
No, I wouldn't go there. Um I, I wasn't around for the original approval, so I'm not sure what, what are you doing with that space that is being increased by a couple of inches? Is that just adding space or?
Um no, it's, it's, it's really more a function of, if you look, I should have put it here, the original building. If you look at the original building K, it, it had a full two story, so the full first floor, the full second floor. And then the third floor was like ten twenty, which has the dormer windows, like, like the, this, this area right here. So we, we added the full third floor and then we compromised by holding down the, the sides of the building. But that pushed the roof height up and we went back and forth with Bruce Beinfield over, you know, different approaches. As well, we've, we've been going through different construction methodologies and really, really refining and spending the time with the whole team on, you know, what's the actual method of steel construction. We're building this, you know, assuming everything goes the way we want it to, which it seems like it will, we're gonna be building this out of concrete and steel, which is much more expensive, but we think a better product and that now given rise to us needing a little bit more kind of area between floors for mechanical equipment that kind of services each floor, ductwork and so on. All those details have not been figured out for this first phase.
I see. Okay, that's what you're gonna be doing with that space up there and, and there's no change in the use. I got it, okay.
Okay, uh because this is, you're going to thank George. Because Jeremy, we need to ask the public, you know.
That's correct.
Would anybody else in the, on the, on the, in the meeting like to speak to this at all, even though you don't have to? Anybody here in the additional cabinets? Okay, um this is a general meeting item, so there's, there's really no resolution. I would just ask um for a motion.
Motion for the commission.
A motion from the commission to approve the three changes to the three buildings as submitted. Is that you Jennifer? You, you made the motion?
Their hand went up.
Yep, and I think Larry Warble, what Larry Warble, did you second it?
Uh I second the motion made by Jennifer.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed? Seeing none, hearing none. Mr. Genvys, your three changes to your three buildings have been approved.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And Jeremy, we'll keep you posted as we work through this garage idea, but we wanted to, you know, share with you first before we really dug into the design idea. And, you know, as soon as we can, we'll come back. We'll probably have a similar kind of meeting around phase two or phase three. Just to kind of walk through any tweaks and someone that come around in the final design, but you know, we, we, Kate, what are we thinking in terms of, you know, being ready to re-present, you know, any slight modifications to phase three? Will that be like three months, four months?
It doesn't look like Kate is connected to audio here.
Oh, okay. I, I think it's about three or four months probably till we get to that. I mean, the plan is to get these drawings finalized, which we're pretty close now. And then get going and then as soon as we get going, kind of turn the architects loose on phase, what I loosely call phase two, but really it's like a green form. So thank you very much. We so appreciate your taking the time tonight. And I like being the guinea pigs.
David, my only comment is if that new parking garage saves you money in excavation and time, it's gotta be a great idea.
Yeah, it's definitely more, much more efficient. There's less shoring required.
Yep.
So it's cheaper. It's actually a little cheaper and it yields more parking, so it was kind of a win-win.
There you go. Okay, thank you, sir. We're off to the next, you're welcome. Moving on to the next, we have two resolutions to redo. I would actually just want to skip one second with regards to nineteen fifty-nine.
That's correct.
The one that I printed out was headed millionaires in it.
Yep, we, I have here the red line version.
Okay.
Which is the corrected version. We sent out the first version, but this is the corrected version.
Okay, we're just keeping it right. Jennifer, can you read the next item? Do you need Jennifer, please?
For Dan.
Thank you.
Deliberation and possible decision of the following: Special permit application number two nine seven A. Alfa Skincare, Alfa Mertalina, Moore sixty-three, White Street. Public to operate unlimited skin and healthcare consultancy, esthetician services as a home office occupation.
Uh thank you. We received a draft resolution or a packet. It is a tiny red line from last go-around. Where the date of action was changed April fourteenth and the publication was changed April twenty-third. I'm gonna go first since I was, I'm allowed to. My only question for Jeremy is, um, uh two, two items. Item number E on page three, it says computerized reservation system. I just wanted to add the words or written log. Something used as the old fashioned day-timer book. Um I still have it on my desk. And then the last item is, and I did bring the plans, is a separate primary entrance to the home occupation shall not be permitted. I think it already exists.
I think one of the reasons is one of the regs. The regs says you can't really have a separate entrance. But here, I got the plans here.
I had the big fat green button. That is my correct?
But I, I can get these plans for.
Steve, did not the addition on the original application have a separate entrance into that so-called bedroom?
I think, I think it did. That's what I'm pulling, I'm pulling up the plans right now.
That is, that is true. There, there is a separate entrance, which that entrance goes in actual treatment room, not the waiting room. And I believe the applicant testified at the public hearing that individuals would come through the main entrance of the house into the waiting room and then from the waiting room would go into the treatment room. So that, that separate door would not be used for the business from what I understand.
Okay, so the door exists. We're just gonna say that it's gotta be either not utilized.
Yeah, I think, didn't, if I recall, didn't they speak about that they use that to assist with inventory and getting sort of materials into the treatment room, but it would not be used, like you said, Fred, for clients to be coming into as an entrance. It was more a door used to alleviate and make it easier to get, you know, material and inventory in. That's why I thought she's, I, I remember, but maybe not.
No, no, I think, I think you're hundred percent correct, Karen. I, I think the answer is if you guys can see this, maybe you can't. The door sits here, your little finger is. But that goes into the treatment room. The waiting room is down here, so you commit the front door of the house, you go into the waiting room, you go there. I just wanna make sure the resolution is, is what it's supposed to say, so. Do we think we need a change to that?
We did clarify it by saying, because the entrance is there, but we could say shall not be permitted to be used by clients.
Perfect, okay.
Yep, that's, yeah.
Then the last thing that I had was um this special permit, special permits run with the land. But if this woman sells her house, we don't want this to be.
Someone could run the exact same operation. They couldn't run it different than this. They would have to be licensed like she is. They would have to abide by all the requirements of max six people a day in this one room. It's possible, but it's, in my opinion, unlikely. And if there were any changes, they would have to come back to the commission. So unless they could run it exactly like this.
Okay. For Jennifer, can I ask you a realtor question?
No.
From a realtor question, back in the old days, my dentist was in his house. Right? He could have sold, he could have sold his dentist dental practice with his house. So that's what this would do. It, it is, have you ever seen that come across your desk? Because I could buy the house and be a dentist, but then I would have to go back and get the thing changed.
Correct.
She could sell, she could.
She could be an esthetician.
Correct.
Could sell it to be an esthetician.
Correct. That's what we're saying is, that's what we're saying is permissible.
Very infrequent, I mean, I mean, I've never seen an esthetician, I, I've never known an esthetician of business being sold a, a, being operated in a house.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jim.
Steve, let me ask if it, if it matters. Because the reason I ask the question is because the house, houses, the the house, the property that David Genvys bought for the
For the, yeah, they just.
For the throughway, the special.
Yeah, correct.
Special means people.
Yep.
That was this honestory school and it hadn't been used as a honestory school as I remember for twenty years.
Correct. He could have reopened it as a school, as a preschool. Right? But he knocked it down, so it was a change in use. I just, my, my point was that I didn't want it selling. I, I didn't want the, the home office occupation tag running with the house for any, for any different use. That's all. But if it can only be for an esthetician, then it can only be for an esthetician, which is pretty specific.
Right, it's less or equal, right? It can't be a salon, it can't be. It can't be a beauty parlor. It can't be a higher intensity business. And estheticians, like dentists, I mean, not as licensed, as hard as a dentist, but like they have, you know, state licensure requirements. So it wasn't just like anybody could open it and like start running some other kind of business.
Correct.
It can't be a higher.
Yeah, I think that's the way to word it. Okay. Let's go around the horn. Those are my three comments. I think Jeremy's going to change the.
Paragraph E.
Paragraph E.
And paragraph G.
And paragraph G.
We'll see what other people have as well.
Okay. Next, we'll go, Jennifer, any questions? Any changes, edits?
No.
You good? Okay. Jim Rand.
Yes.
I have no comments to the draft.
Larry Warble.
Um, no. Well, I just have one question since you brought it up. And I think it's fine if it's, if it is the case. But would this mean, since we're setting that this property fit, or this business fits in, was it 405? Does that mean this property, if we were to sell to someone else? Any of the other businesses that qualify for 405, they could work there? Or does it have to be this one specific?
Yeah.
Do you need to be specific?
They have to come back to the commission.
All right. Okay. That's just a question. No other questions?
Kara Gately.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Thank you. Kara?
Yeah.
Okay. George Riley?
Nothing, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Just a vote.
Okay, so if there's any, if there's anybody have any questions with my edits? Seeing none? I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as amended. Is that you, George?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second from Jennifer?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, everyone's hand is in the air. Great.
Great, thank you.
Steve, you're voting four?
We're not.
Yes.
I voted four.
Six to zero. Moving on, next, on a roll.
Special permit.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Special permit application. Okay. Special permit application. Zero. Darien Shoe Repair, 1959, Boston Road. Closed established Shoe Repair Personal Service Establishment within 300 square foot single-story building space formerly occupied by all state insurance companies.
Okay. I'm going to pass since I read the old one. And then everybody else go first. So follow the list. George Riley, any questions? Changes, edits?
Nope. Nope. All good.
And everyone's got the more recent one that's, that's back mine?
I, this Jim Rand, I do not.
Okay.
I didn't, wait, I don't, I did not.
The one that I got, the one that I printed out. The one that I printed.
The one.
Yeah, the one that I printed out from home was, was in Bella Petri. It was talking about salon. So I read the wrong book. It has been since.
Um, yeah, it's, it's wrong. That's where my house is wrong.
Okay. It's, so it has since been changed. It was sent out, what, early this afternoon?
No, sent today's, Fred, we sent it out, what, Friday?
I thought we did. If we, if we have to re, forget this for next week, we can, but.
We can do that?
Yeah, we'll just do it next week.
Is that the one from the?
I bet the applicant, Spiriton, Todd Rides.
Yes.
All right. For the shoe, for the shoe facility? I, I've got it. And the dates are April 14th and April 23rd.
Yep.
Well, Kara, you're up next. Do you have any, which one do you have?
I have April 14th in red, but then I have.
What's the name of the? What's the name of the property owner?
I have an applicant and applicant as HPH Salon in Starsdale.
That's the wrong one.
Okay, we'll.
Okay. We'll pass on this one, do it next week. Some people got the right one, some people didn't. The guy's already, he's already operating, so it's more of an ridge.
Okay.
We're not holding anybody up. Next thing on the agenda, deliberations on any public items closed tonight. It's the next one. So let's go with the first one. Flood damage prevention with 18th January Road. Any questions, comments? Start, we'll start at the top again. Jennifer?
No questions, no comment.
Jim Rand?
No, I have no questions. I'm in favor.
Larry Warble?
All right. No questions.
Kara Gately?
No questions, no issues.
George Riley?
No concern.
Okay, so Jeremy and Fred will read a draft resolution for approval for this. We'll get it on our next meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Next one, special permit application, Darien Historical Society, to establish the five-week summer camp. Start at the bottom. George Riley, any questions, comments?
No, sir.
Kara Gately? Okay, that was a no. Larry Warble?
No questions.
Jim Rand?
No questions.
Jennifer Leahy?
No question.
Okay. So we'll bring up another draft resolution for approval for this one and have it ready for next week?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Approval of minutes from March 10th. Uh, we got that, something, I heard that something.
Henry Durski? Here's your copy.
Where's my copy?
Ready?
Okay, good. March 10th was about a month ago. We did Darien Shoes, we talked about the intersection of West Avenue. We did mandatory referral. We talked about the cellar panels on the roof of Darien, of the Royal, the old town hall homes. 14519 Old Kings Highway approved his resolution for Mike Gedney. And that's it. Okay, I'm going to update nothing. Everything else was pretty straightforward. Any questions, edits, scribbled edits from anybody, any commissioner? Entertained a motion to approve. Everyone's good? Entertainer motion to approve from Jim Rand?
Proof of proved, proved as excellently dropped.
Fantastic. We'll take a second from Larry Warble.
I second Jim Rand's excellent proposal.
All those in favor?
Just looking for the hands. One, two, three. Everyone's hands in the air. Great.
Okay. Great. Wonderful. Uh, next item up for bid is, I think it's the director's report.
Right. You have a copy of the quarterly report. It was emailed to you covering the time, January to March. So you have that. That's a good summary of what's been going on the past couple of weeks in this department. Also to confirm, town hall's still closed to the public, but we're still tending to business. People are dropping off materials in the building, the foyer right outside room 119, whether it's a permit or applications. We're still responding to emails daily, phone calls. So we're trying to keep up with business during this unusual circumstance, but we are closed to the public. So those members of the public that have questions or concerns can call us and oftentimes people will email us maps or plans that we can go through with them on the phone. So certainly, we're trying to get through as much work as possible, which brings me to the fact that we'll be meeting again this way next week. We have five public hearing items and potentially three decisions. And we will continue to work with the applicants on PowerPoint presentations to make the presentations as efficient as possible. And if you have questions about tonight's meeting, ideas to make it work better, you can call either myself or Fred. We'll continue to get the hang of this. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Jeremy. I really do appreciate everybody going in here. I really have a whole lot to report, except that, that I think the goal of our commission is that we want to just keep the ball moving. There's, you know, a couple of projects that are in the pipeline that have deadlines, be it, you know, financing or approvals or the school, which is Oxford School. We appreciate everybody's hard work and I think we can also watch all this stuff on TV 79. So I appreciate Fred and Jeremy and Susan Keating, not to be confused with Dave Keating, for helping us. You've got to keep it a little bit late. That's it for me. You guys, you can't hear me talk anymore. Calendar update?
We're going to be, next week, public hearing night and then the weekend, the next few weeks after that as well.
Okay. This is special meeting, so no other business can be done. And so it is now 9:15. We probably started 15 minutes late, so intended motion to adjourn from George Riley.
Right.
Yes, you did.
How can you do that?
Thank you, Kara. Are you going to second? All those in favor?
Six hands in the air? Great.
All right, guys. Thanks a lot for jumping in. This is, made it easy once we got rock and roll.